My name is Susan Carter. I'm the moderator of tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization which seeks to promote active participation of citizens in government. Recordings of this event may not be used without the express written approval of the League. No part of a League-sponsored video production may be used in advertising or in any way to promote a candidate. The League will only allow audio or video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety. The format for tonight will be as follows. We'll rotate through the candidates, allowing each candidate two minutes to give an opening statement, including their qualifications, what they bring to the position they are seeking, and what they feel is the most crucial issues needing to be addressed. Opening questions were compiled by the Pocatello League, and we will be taking comment or, excuse me, questions from the audience this evening. There will be a League member, our lovely Ms. Matty, who can pick up your questions from you. She will take them over to our table here with League members to be read for clarity or for duplication of questions. We'll try to get to all of the questions, time allowing. When responding to a question, you'll have one minute. We do have a timer who will let you know how much time is left for your response. We ask the audience to refrain from commenting during the candidates' response time and the candidates to stay on topic. Tonight, we will be hearing from candidates for Pocatello City Council. Seat one is James Bucci, Steve Contreras, Hayden Paulson, Idaho Law, and Rainbow Maldonado, who had a prior commitment and could not be here this evening. For seat two, we have Brent Nichols. Candidate Craig Yaden declined to participate. For seat three, we have Corey Mangum, and candidate Gary Akisian declined our invitation to participate. As per the League of Women Voters' rules, we only hear from candidates who are running in a contested race. Okay. So, we'll start with our questions, and we will start with Brent Nichols, and we'll just go this way, and then next time, we'll start with Mr. Contreras and go this way. "How do you specifically plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in town? And will you follow the wishes of your constituents even if they do not match your personal opinions?"
We're going to do an opening statement?
So sorry, I just got right to the questions. Let's just go right, how'd you like, two minutes?
Okay, perfect.
Sorry. Excuse me.
All right. Good evening. My name is Brent Nichols. I'm currently serving on the Pocatello City Council in seat number two, and I'm seeking reelection. I first like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this candidate forum. You know, forums like this help educate the voters and I believe are essential to our democracy. I'm seeking reelection because local government is one area where a private citizen can have a direct impact on our community, and I believe it's important for citizens to be involved. I've lived in Pocatello for 40 years, and this is my home. I've spent most of my career as a real estate developer and commercial contractor, but I'm also passionate about protecting our environment, historic buildings, and open space. You know, some people think that real estate development and preservation are mutually exclusive, but I'd like to think I'm proof that they are not. My companies have done several large economic development projects that have retained or attracted hundreds of jobs to Pocatello. But personally, I've been a founding board member and long-term board member of the Sagebrush Step Land Trust, Regional Incorporator of Neighbor Works, former Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Every project that I've done in Pocatello was an eye towards making the community better, such as helping to keep the post office downtown. I've built a bunch of affordable housing. I've helped to retain local companies and attract large ones, and I've renovated a variety of historic buildings downtown. If reelected, I have a two-pronged priority: balancing robust economic development with preserving and enhancing our quality of life. The two go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Contreras?
My name is Steve Contreras. My experience in my life, juvenile probation officer for 25 years in Oakland, California, high school teacher for 18 years. During that time, I coached football, basketball, and baseball. Moved here from California a few years back because my in-laws live in Salmon, Idaho. My son lives here. He's been here for 15 years. Our four grandchildren live here. So, my wife and I, we both retired. We decided to come and be with family. So, that's why we're here. So, during my time, I've been able to experience wonderful things in this lovely city of Pocatello. So, I'd like to read a statement real quick. It won't take me very long, but it's a statement on the back of my palm card that I think is very important to me, and it goes as this. "My unwavering commitment to conservative principles is firmly rooted in the belief that the United States Constitution serves as a robust framework for the governance of our society. I am dedicated to responsible management of our city resources, aiming to eliminate wasteful spending and ensure fiscal responsibility. Furthermore, I hold the U.S. Constitution in the highest regard, recognizing it as the bedrock of our nation's rights and liberties. My solemn pledge is to diligently uphold these conservative ideals in city government. I staunchly advocate for the importance of maintaining law and order within our communities while simultaneously safeguarding individual liberties, fostering personal responsibility, and preserving constitutional rights. These core values form the essence of my commitment to public service." Thank you.
Thank you. Hayden Paulson?
Hi. I'm Hayden Paulson. I'm running for seat one for Pocatello City Council. I was born and raised here in Pocatello. I was pretty lucky. My dad did outdoor programs for the city, so I grew up at the Nordic Center, hiking, hunting, skiing, fishing, you name it. I love this community. I left when I was 18, and I came back around 25, 26. I did my undergraduate degree in California, and I graduate. I have a master's in Strategic Studies in International Economics from Johns Hopkins, and I chose to come back. I want to make Pocatello a better place for all of us, especially those who left, and I want to make them want to come back here. I currently help manage my family's local business. It's an agricultural company. I deal with money every single day. Send checks, deposit checks, deal with all of that. My biggest priorities, it's affordable housing. I have canvassed over 500 houses this year alone. Every single person, well, not every, it's a 40-40 right now with some other issues, but they all address the issue that they are being boxed out of living here: lifelong residents and young couples who want to have children here who cannot afford to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. James Bucci?
Good evening. I'm James Bucci. I am not from Pocatello. I've come from Massachusetts, by way through North Carolina, Colorado. I've been up here before doing this. I ran last year, or two years ago. I'm running because I am the working class. I'm one of the people that cooks your meals, bags your groceries. And the problem is, he's absolutely right. Rent is outrageous, and under four years, my rent has gone up over a third. There's no reason for that, all right? It's getting ridiculous. A studio apartment I lived in about five, six years ago for $4.50 is now $800, all right? Now, I'm gonna, I have a different philosophy because there's a house that has two and a half acres paying about the same amount for property tax as another house that's only a third acre, half the bedrooms. We need to start looking at the land and the value of the land and not just the property. It's kind of a Gregorism economics. I don't know, not many people have heard of it, but he was pretty big back in Mark Twain's day. I know, it's old, but hell, we're living in a capitalist system, right? From Adam Smith, but guess what? This is not capitalism. You don't see your corner stores anymore because we got family dollars. These bohemus, right? They make $8 billion in profit last year, and they're paying me $10.50 an hour. That is completely and utterly wrong. And I am getting driven out. Most people can't live on that. I can because I don't have any debt, but that's not your normal American family. If I had a son, I would not be able to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Mangum?
Hello. My name is Corey Mangum. I currently serve on the Pocatello City Council in seat three, and I'm seeking reelection for this seat, seat three. Before I say anything else about myself, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this amazing forum. I think it's very awesome that a forum like this is put together for our community, for people to understand what the issues are and to understand who is running for these seats. It's important that you guys know who we are, not necessarily that we know you, but you know us for sure because we're your representation if we are elected. And so, with that, I'm seeking this position because I feel that it's important that someone who lives in a community has the responsibility to uphold their community, to care for their community, to give their lives essentially for their communities. And I feel like I've done that this last year. Me and my wife, we live here, we have seven kids. We've been in the city of Pocatello for a little over 10 years. Before that, we were in Idaho Falls. I graduated from Arco, Idaho, at Butte County High School, so I'm a small-town Idaho guy. And I heard some people laugh. Arco is a wonderful city, but it's got nothing on Pocatello, population-wise. I am the branch manager at Washington Federal Bank. I've been in banking for a little over 12 years, and I've also served on our financial and audit committee here for the city of Pocatello, using my expertise there. I serve on many boards, regional health, regional behavioral health, Neighborhood Works. I was one of the civitans. I have a degree in government with an emphasis in legal studies. My wife and I have our seven kids who all live here and go to school here in the city of Pocatello. So, I have a vested interest in the growth, the betterment, and the success of the city of Pocatello.
Thank you. Idaho Law?
Well, if you're all that's showing up, none of us have a chance of changing the atmosphere here, and it'll just be more death and suffering for Pocatello and Radioactive City more on the map. But, thank you, though, for what you might do and what I hope you'll do, but my campaign is very simple. I'm green and free, if you know what any of that means: Green Party, libertarians, anti-war environment. My background reflects that. I'm a geologist, paleontologist, health physicists, nuclear physicists, and my specialty is bombs and weapons and missiles and lasers and masers, weapons of technology. Long time. And I care about our environment. I'm a forester. I'm a biologist. I'm a lot of different things as people learn to get to know me. I am, including a reporter, right, Brian? Including attended the LDS Church for a while. I helped them in getting out of the, how you say, divest from Coca-Cola so they wouldn't become the number-one cartel dealers in the world of cocaine. I know you don't understand that, but believe me, they did, and they got out, and I helped them, and I'm glad I did. But, this community has been contaminated by uranium materials since 1942, under the Project, the secrecy of the Manhattan Project. It's time to arrest and prosecute all the people involved, past and present. This will be more hearings and more things because I've spent my last few years campaigning all over the world and the country to do just that: let everybody know how the ignorance here and the lack of voice that we have. It's time to sue everybody. It's a lot quicker way than trying to deal with votes. Get rid of them, throw them in prison, have a new election so we got decent people running our communities that care. And I've heard some good things from a few people here, that I heard that the uranium issue did get kind of brought up.
Thank you.
And so, yes, I'll continue later.
We're going to start with the question now that I already asked, and I'll read it again. I apologize for that. "How do you specifically plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town? And will you follow the wishes of your constituents even if they don't match your personal opinions?" Mr. Nichols?
Sure. You know, I think the best way to involve the citizens in the decision-making process is to listen, to have an open dialogue, and to, you know, listen to what the citizens have to say, whether you agree with it or not. That's why after every city council meeting, I don't know if you've noticed or not, I stay after each council meeting and have an open dialogue with anybody that wants to talk to me. In addition to that, I'm always available via phone or email, trying to keep those lines of communications open.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras?
Can you repeat the question, please?
"How do you specifically plan to involve residents in the decision-making process? And will you follow the wishes of your constituents even if they do not match your personal opinions?"
I will follow the, my constituents' wishes because that's who I represent. I'm not representing myself, I'm representing them. The way I would do that is through transparency. I will invite them to every meeting. If they don't attend, and if they wish, then I could provide them some notes of the meetings. The transparency includes answering all phone calls, answering all texts. Might take me a day or two, but I definitely will answer and follow up on all questions asked of me. And the main thing that I would express to my constituents is to attend the meetings. Don't get the information secondhand. Come here and get it firsthand. And if you need some firsthand information, then contact me. We can discuss whatever you want to discuss.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I don't care who you voted for or what your political beliefs are. We all live in Pocatello, and all, every single person in this room is here because they care. I will follow the wishes of the constituents of Pocatello. Day one, I would make a motion to reinstate public comment, but as Brent Nichols said, I will gladly talk to any and all of you at any time about any concern that you have. I have personally canvassed, just for this election, 500 houses, and I care about talking to the people door-to-door, to their face.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
All right. To get the residents involved, I'm going to be going to your door. If you elect me, I will be knocking on your door. I'm doing that right now. For the love of God, please, those dogs are a pain in the ass. I like, please put them up. I can't tell you how much, I've hopped fences already. It's scary, all right? Now, when it comes to if I'll follow the will of the voter, yeah, because I'm pretty much up here for the basics: your home, food, health, you know, make sure the water's good, schooling. We need to start hitting that real hard because these kids have lost a lot during COVID, and they're not getting shit right now. It's pretty bad. Sorry, I apologize, but it's really bad. I'm actually glad my son moved to North Carolina because the school systems are doing better there right now than they are here, and we need to really focus on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mangum?
Following the will of our constituents is part of the job description, and I feel like this is what I do currently. I've had meetings with multiple people who are concerned or have ideas or have thoughts about how the city is run or what we do as city officials, and I've had people come into my job and sit with me on the job and ask questions, and we're able to have dialogue. And so, I think it's important to keep those open lines of communication and to have that dialogue with the constituents. I believe that here in the city, we have email, we have texts, we have town hall meetings, we have multiple different fashions for people to be able to voice their opinions, and I believe that it's important that we execute each and every one of those so that people feel heard, so people know that they're heard, and so that we show that we care and that we're consistently doing what is best for the people of the city of Pocatello.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Well, I guess if you haven't gotten one of those leaflets I have back there, they're meant to come as a couplet. That's how it goes out on the media, basically, so you can have a family meeting, discuss it. One spouse can do, read one thing and click and see all the stuff, how public it is about the contamination and stuff in our community, and the other can look at more detail on it. And then, invite your friends, and then, what the heck, have a party! She'll invite everybody. That's the only way you're going to make some change here. That interest, so you can also sign up for class action if you want to be involved, class action, or individual action, because anybody who lost people to cancer, we're out here to help. We got the data, we published the data, and I know how to find that. So, we're out here to help. I've saved millions of people, and I can document that because I helped people.
I would ask, in the following questions, that you would stay on topic, please?
No. I will relate to the topic.
Our next question would be, "What would you do to increase transparency in city government?" We'll start with Mr. Contreras.
Well, again, I would invite my constituents to every single council meeting so they have the knowledge of what's going on. Transparency, again, begins with communication, follow-up phone calls, follow-up texts, talking to people on the street, and just accepting what they have to say to me, and so there's positive feedback because there's going to be a lot of questions that perhaps I will not know the answer to, but I will find out the answers and get back to them. So, again, I think they have a part, too. They can't just sit back and wait for the councilmen to come to them to give them the information. They need to come out and be aggressive and come out and seek the information, and if they don't get it, then perhaps I could provide that for them.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
First, the meetings are on YouTube, which I think are really important. You can be in your bed, in your kitchen, whatever, and you can watch the city council meetings, which I think is a good thing. I would encourage, like Mr. Contreras said, everyone should attend the meetings, but I also, it's become a bit of a hobby and a passion for me to go door-to-door. I love meeting the citizens face-to-face. I love talking to them at their doorsteps, and I would follow up with every concern that is addressed to me with that. But personally, I would also like to host a series of town halls that are more issue-related. For example, one day it could be about snow removal, another day it could be about tree maintenance, another day it could be about bike and trail. That's what I would do.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
The city's pretty good with transparency. He's right. It's on YouTube. You can look up the budget. You can see where all this money is going. It's up to the people to actually want to, and as you'll see, this is not a packed house, all right? It's going out and making the people see this, so that's going to be part of the transparency, me knocking on doors. But the one thing I would like to see are receipts on the budget, like, you know, because you can get to the links and it'll show you, you know, this much going to that, but I want to see the actual receipts of where this money is going and who it's going to. That's pretty much what I would like to improve on.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
When I think of transparency, I think of an open-door policy and allowing people the ability to access documentation or the ability to access information concerning our budget, concerning our policies, concerning our procedures, why we do what we do, and how we get to the conclusion of where we got to. And I think that we do a pretty decent job of doing that now. We do it very well. We do it very well. We have it broadcasted on YouTube. People can come into the different meetings. People can come and meet with us one-on-one. They can sit in our meetings, and so I think that we do a pretty good job of this. But there's always room for growth. There's always room for improvement. There's always one more step that we can take to be a little bit more transparent, and whatever that is that the constituent would request, we can go down that road and visit that and make sure that it doesn't endanger anything, but that we are able to give them the perfect answer, whatever information that they're requesting.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh.
Repeat the question since I gotta wait so long. Drift a little bit.
We will rotate. We'll rotate through all the candidates.
What?
We'll rotate, and we'll start with the different candidates.
Oh, you're going to rotate?
Uh-huh. Yes. The question was, "What would you do to increase transparency in city government?"
Obviously, you gotta arrest them, like I said. You gotta arrest the people. This stuff has been here for so long. How much is your bill for fixing, paving the roads here? It's been an ongoing thing of your taxpayers. When I entered this community, I brought billions for it, but instead, you're going to pay the money. You have been paying the money. The high taxes in this community, paving the roads all the time, but they didn't remove it. It's still there. They still don't give a mask to the workers who work with the roads. You know, we still endanger people, which all of them, I hope, will sue them, too, and not just as city government, but as individuals. So, again, we'll support you in lawsuits to get rid of all of these problems here and all the people who maintain it. God bless the church putting the temple in the most radioactive city in the world.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. So, transparency, I believe, is just absolutely critical to local governments, for all governments as a matter of fact, and I think the city does, presently does, an excellent job of being transparent. You know, all the city council members, the mayor, all the department heads, you know, are willing to sit down and discuss, you know, any item at about any time to provide the documents that you need. So, again, I think we're just really doing an excellent job of that. I would also would advocate more town hall meetings, and I'd also like to point out that all of our budget information is publicly available. We have implemented some new software that will make it easier for our finance department to generate sort of more specific on-the-fly type of reports to correspond with specific questions. So, again, I think we're doing a great job already.
Thank you. The next question is, "What is your opinion on the lack of public comment period after city council meetings?" And this one will start with Mr. Paulson.
I strongly disagree. I know not everywhere does it. I know this isn't Congress. I know this isn't other places, but it was there before, and I think it should still be there. It's only 15 minutes. I know the point isn't to have a magic wand immediately address your current issue, but it's to have your elected officials know what's on your mind in that moment so that they can follow up with it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
Yeah, they need to put the public comment back. I mean, honestly, I don't care if you're standing there for an hour. It's your job to listen to the public. Like, if you're here all night, I'm sorry, I know you don't want to hear, like, the mayor and all that. Like, it sucks. It really does. It sucks for them being up here getting bitched at, but it's, sorry, but it is part of the job, and if it takes all night into the morning, then that's what it takes, and you have to sit here and listen.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
Public comment is very important. I believe that people have the right to have their voices heard by public officials. I think it's very important, and if not, if not in this specific forum, we have people who are able to contact us via email, via phone call, face-to-face. They can establish a meeting, schedule a meeting with us. They can come to our meetings. We do have the town hall meetings. So, if it's not just this one specific vein that we're focused on, there's more than just the one option. I'm all for the one option. I'm not against it at all. I'm not opposed to it at all. I'm all for having the public comment after the city council meetings, but, again, if we're focused on the comment as a whole or being able to reach out to us city officials, there's more than just that one way.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
I have to take the brunt for a lot of why that doesn't exist or had problems in the past because I'm the one that they illegally banned throughout all of Pocatello, every street, every park, everything, and city hall. Of course, I won the case, of course, violating my First Amendment rights again, but, you know, that's the issue. They don't want to hear what I had to tell you, and a lot of people still don't want to hear it. They just ignore it and have your loved ones die, suffer. Cancer and leukemia are ugly things. Somebody's there from California, you know, we've been selling radioactive fertilizer to California for, what, since the '60s? How much of it's accumulated? How many people? It's the number-one killer of farmworkers in California, leukemia and cancer, just from working in the fields, breathing this fertilizer that we put there, that we sold to them. I don't buy anything from California. I hope you don't.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I disagreed with the removing of the items from the audience, from the agenda topic. You know, I liked hearing from the citizens, if only for 15 minutes, and I think that the public comment period should be reinstated, but until, you know, the topic is back on the agenda, I want everybody to know, again, that I'm going to continue to stay after every meeting and listen to anybody that wants to talk, and I'm also a big advocate of the town hall meetings. We actually have one scheduled for October 16th at 6:30, so I encourage everybody to show up for that. So, I absolutely support public engagement with public officials, and the more, the better, as far as I'm concerned. So I absolutely support public engagement with public officials, and the more, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Contreras?
Would you repeat that question, please? Everybody was all over the place on that one.
What is your opinion on the lack of public comment period after city council meetings?
Well, there definitely is a lack of comments. I volunteer at the senior center four days a week. I serve lunch. I help clean up. If you want to hear some comments, go to the senior center and you will get an earful. They know what's going on everywhere, all day long. They know. And they're the reason why I'm here tonight. A group of them, maybe 20, 25, approached me and asked me if I would be interested in running so I could be a voice for them because they feel that they are not, that there's no voice for them at all. So they convinced me after two months of talking to me and cornering me and calling me up and texting me, I finally gave in and said, yes, I will represent you. I will try to represent you. And I will run for city council so I can represent you. So if you want to know, I think people really know. Sometimes they don't talk about it, but you go to senior center and you will get an earful. They know what happened 10 years ago, what happened yesterday, what's going to happen tomorrow. So I plan on being their voice if elected.
Thank you. What are your priorities for infrastructure maintenance and improvements? And we'll start with you, Mr. Bucci.
Well, I think it's pretty obvious. The infrastructure improvements we need right now, the school needs to be rebuilt, right? Oh, sorry. The school is the major issue, and we got a bond coming up on that this next election, which I hope you all vote for because I am and I agree with it. But if you're talking about the roads and all that, the main problem with the roads are the drivers. There are a lot of, yeah. Y'all get me on that, right? Okay, thank you. The roads are pretty good. I mean, yeah, you're gonna get your potholes and all that. And I would also like to build up what we have instead of building out. That lowers the value of your city's land when you start building out and you have all these subdivisions. The more you build in, like the center of the city, that's where all, that's where your profits are going to be coming from. That's what's going to bring the money into the town so we can get more teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
So currently, we have been working diligently on the maintenance and the improvement of city infrastructure. It's been echoed in these chambers multiple times that we have to focus on maintenance. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance in the city of Pocatello. And we are, as a council, as a whole, we are working at catching up on this deferred maintenance. We are applying for grant after grant. We have about $30 million in grant applications out there. So that way, it doesn't hike up your taxes for us to do these improvements and to do this maintenance. And so focusing diligently on finding ways to go out, get money to come in, and to do this maintenance and to work on the infrastructure without burdening the constituents is the way that I would love to address those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Infrastructure, huh? Anybody taste the water in some of these wells out here, these places I've been with people? Everybody knows. It's awful. I don't know what they're doing. You know, we have, I don't know, eight, nine wells in the city. Of course, we got a million tons of uranium sitting over the water and percolates down and increasing every year. But besides that, it tastes like crap, really. And there's more than one well, so, you know, maintenance? I don't know. If anybody checks the water, I don't drink it. I won't even drink the bottled water here. So, you know, we have those kinds of issues. We're still trying to cover up every little uranium thing that the city in the past has put out there and trying to hide it. Not remove it, just hide it and expose the workers. But ever helped the citizens? Never. Never helped the citizens remove it. Not at all. And I'm the $50 million candidate. When I run for office, I'm helping everybody in Eastern Idaho.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. So preserving and protecting and upgrading our public infrastructure, I think, is critical to our community. And it's also critical for economic development efforts. You know, we have had some deferred maintenance going on in city facilities in this year's budget. The council allocated $1 million to help get caught up on some of this deferred maintenance, so that's a a big issue. We've also been successful in getting $1.7 million with the help of Mr. Simpson to start getting a sewer line up Johnny Creek. And that's going to be critically important to help get some of those homes off of well-inseptic and onto our city system to help protect our aquifer.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras?
I would like to see the historic downtown continue to be maintained, continue to make it a more vibrant place. It's very vibrant now, but we could do better there, I think. Also, I'd like to see the roads repaired. Some of the roads are really, really bad. And maybe some stops, some signs that say, slow down. If you go down, if you go down Clark Street, there's a house there with the sign, say, welcome to Clark Street Raceway. Because cars are going so fast down that street that the senior citizens that live on that street are afraid just to walk out because they're afraid of the speeding cars. So I would think the roads, and then also on Yellowstone, we got these yellow pikes that, or Fred Meyer, right in front of Fred Meyers. I'd like to see those things removed. I'd like to see those things removed and put a more pleasant-looking barrier there. Because those pikes, they look like they're temporary. But apparently, they're not. They're permanent. But I'd like to see those removed and put something more pleasing to the eye there.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I agree with our two incumbents. One, it's extremely important to support downtown extra infrastructure without increasing our taxes. But there are little things that day-to-day people bring up to me. Other cities in this area, someone at their door, they said, I know that Logan, and I know that Idaho Falls does it. There's an elementary school right here. Why is there street parking allowed? And then the snowplows come and they block the sidewalks so that students can't walk to school. Little things like that. I know there's a lot of stop signs, a lot of yield signs, et cetera, that are sun-bleached and faded. It's those little things that I think make our city desirable for people to want to be in.
Thank you. What are your opinions surrounding increasing mental health care for Pocatello residents? We'll start with Mr. Mangum.
I feel like when the head is sick, the rest of the body is sick. And so mental health is a huge, it's a huge deal. And I'm a proponent for benefiting anyone who is suffering from a mental health issue. We all have some sort of mental health issue, whether we're sad at a moment, whether we suffer a loss or whatever the issue is. But I believe that it's really important that we focus on mental health. I have a background in intensive behavior intervention, PSR, psychosocial rehabilitation, rather. And so I have a heavy background in mental health. And so I think that it's very important that we address those needs. We had a suicide prevention event not too long ago. And the outpour from people and the support for that event was huge because it addressed and it brought to the spotlight, to the forefront, mental health and suicide. And I think that we have to be aware of those issues in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Things gotta get in you usually. So you either gotta take it yourself or fed it. And in this community, I'm the one who published, if you know anything about what LUDS disease is. LUDS disease is not just lead. LUDS disease is the whole uranium suite that you get exposed to on a regular basis on any windy day here. Or anytime they're disturbing it anywhere in this community. And it's a little speck. It's all you need to get in here. And there's zillions and zillions of alpha beta minerals, which that's what causes bombs to split. That's what causes people to get cancer. Almost all cancers, including a lot of melanoma, from this material. So check the children before you go and spend all this money or people on, doing an analysis of them. Try to see how much heavy metals they got in them already. And how many of them are affecting the brain and everything else, because that's what they do.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Nichols?
Yes. So mental health is a huge issue, not only for our community, but statewide and nationally. The city, and it's a huge problem, and we can always do better and need to do more. But presently, the city works closely with a variety of nonprofits. We work with the Crisis Center. We work with Aid for Friends. We work with the Free Clinic, you know, to try to help, help those nonprofits, help their constituents. So we're doing a pretty good job, but we need to do more.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras?
The mental health issues, I would have to laser-focus on one particular group, and that would be the senior citizens. Because they're the ones that are suffering through loneliness. They're suffering the loss of loved ones. They come to the center and they're all depressed. Sometimes the lunch that they get is the only meal they get during the day. And so they count on that. And so, like I say, they're the reason why I'm here today, because I'm going to be laser-focused on them. They're the ones who suffer probably more mental stress than anybody. Rent, food, loss of loved ones. They need the support more than anybody at this particular moment, I believe. I think the schools are giving good support to kids in schools. They've got some great counselors in the schools. I've been to every single school. I've talked to many teachers, being an educator myself. I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of the teachers. And they have a lot of things set up for the kids who are suffering from certain illnesses, depression. So I would focus, laser-focus on the seniors.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I think it fundamentally comes down to the material conditions of people and also a community that accepts everyone. People who do not have access to housing are more at risk of developing mental conditions and becoming addicted to drugs, especially opioids. I now know of four, and it's probably more, people who either have committed suicide or have tried as youth in our local high schools because they did not feel accepted for who they were. I would like to work more with the Crisis Center, group homes, Aid for Friends, et cetera, to make our city support these people who are at risk.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
All right. Big problem with the mental health issue is that we don't have universal health care. This is something, if you elect me, we're going to fight for at the federal level. This is BS. There's no reason we shouldn't. We are the richest nation in the world. We should have universal health care for everybody. But when it comes locally, it's about community. It's about the people next door and how they're doing. And you really need to check in on people. We are not a community right now. We are a bunch of individuals who are trying to just make it by because he's right. We don't have affordable housing, all right? We don't have, oh my God, food is ridiculous right now. The prices. It's unacceptable. And this needs to change, all right? Sorry, that's all I got on that.
That's fine. Okay. Most people running for public office are very active in other projects or in their jobs. How will you balance those commitments with the demands of city council duties, Mr. Law?
Well, I just had a nice trip down to California. Where is the first nuclear meltdown in the country? Where did that take place? Anybody know? There would be no Hollywood if the wind was blowing to the east. Wouldn't that be a loss? Because I like Hollywood. Yeah, and where did they hide it? Of course, in the nuclear testing area. When they were still blowing bombs there, and it took them years and years to clean, to dig into the mountain to try to remove it, and they never got it all. Yeah, you don't know things because that's what governments like. City of secrets. It's like it says on my shirt, this is a city of secrets. So where is that uranium materials that we deal with here? Where do they put it? How much do they cover it up and mix it with other stuff, you know? So I have already asked for a flyover to remap it here in our community and elsewhere in Eastern Idaho.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Sure. So finding the time and balancing your time to be active on the city council can indeed be a challenging time. I had really sort of underestimated the huge amount of time that it takes and to, you know, get up to speed on all of the issues. But, you know, one way or another, you make it happen. I sort of pride myself in being super-prepared for the meetings. So you just make it happen.
Okay. Mr. Contreras?
Repeat the question, please?
Sure. Most people running for public office are very active in other projects and their jobs? And how will you balance those commitments with the demands of the city council?
Well, I'm retired, so I have nothing but time. My wife and I adopted our 14-year-old grandson, so it's, the toughest thing for me to do is balance being a father and a grandfather, because I just want to be a grandfather. Being a father, I already did that, but I'm playing both roles now. But a little bit off-topic, I would, I would stress that we back our police, that we back our security, provide measures to enhance the department, establish a fiscally, morally sound budget. So I think, I know I'm off-topic, but those things just keep propping in my mind, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I'm busy, but my work is flexible. It allows me to be able to have two piano students, take cello lessons, I'm part of an interfaith handbell choir in addition to work. And I know I can make it happen. Like, I have zero question about that. Someone actually, when I was canvassing, asked if I would have the ability to read all the materials necessary. I said, well, I'm kind of a nerd with being policy wonk and reading, so I promise you, I have no issue balancing that.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
This would be a 24/7 job for me. I, I get money from the VA and it's just enough to live on, so I don't need another job. I will be doing this 24/7 for, literally, I did a radio interview earlier today. And I gave out my number, said, you can call me 24/7. I don't care. Hell, you want to drunk dial me? That's fine, too. I have no qualms. Literally, this is, this is not a job. This is kind of like, when I was in the military, it was 24/7. And that's exactly how I would treat it here.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
It would take more than the minute allotted to explain the amount of time and the energy that's expended into being on the city council. As I said before, I have a wife and seven kids, and I have another full-time job that I do. But I make it work. It's, it takes a team. It takes a collaborative effort to make it work. And the time that it takes to study the materials, the time that it takes to be in chambers, the time that it takes to be out in community events, I feel that it's my obligation to do that because I care about the city. And so we make it work. We make it function. We make it do what it does. And it always comes out on top. And so my kids are always involved with a lot of the city things that we do, all the parades and different events that we do. So we make it more of a family event versus a dad event or just the adults' event. I want my kids to understand responsibility for the community also. And so that's why they come to these events and they hang out with us, too. So.
Thank you. With so much divisiveness in our world, in our country, and in our community, how will you address this and bring unity to Pocatello, Mr. Nichols?
Well, again, by, by listening and having discussions with the citizens of Pocatello. I mean, that's, that's the only way you can do it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Contreras?
I don't see much divisiveness as I'm roaming around town. But you go to senior center, you see a whole bunch of it. The few Democrats that are in the senior center don't stand a chance against the majority Republicans that are there. And there's always bickering going on. But after, after Saul said, they leave as friends. So we must learn to agree, to disagree sometimes and leave it at that because people, the hatred's going on because of your affiliation, your political affiliation is ridiculous. I don't understand it at all. But we must learn to live together if we're to accomplish anything. Right now, the TV, I don't even watch the TV anymore. It's so depressing sometimes. But I know that, I've seen people argue, but I've seen people walk out of the building as friends. And that's the way we need it to be. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
This is Pocatello. This isn't Fox. This isn't CNN. This is Pocatello. This is the place that we all live in together. I actually have a funny story. When I was canvassing, I'm very explicit what I say. What do you care about for the city? Or what is your biggest issue for the city? And someone said, Biden's ruining the country. And I said, can you think of something a little more local that you care about? And this person... of something a little more local that you care about? And this person said, nope.
Nope.
So it's those situations that I want to bring everyone together to talk about for our community. I want to talk with everyone. I would love to have a face-to-face conversation with every person in this room. And if you want to after, I'm more than happy to chat with you. But this is Pocatello. We all need to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
All right. To deal with decisiveness, I mean, a difference of opinion, that's fine. Like, like he said, oh, Biden's ruining the country. Yeah. These Trump supporters, but I found, you talk to them, they're like, well, because I have progressive ideology, you know, universal health, Kihei paid family leave, stuff like that. Oh, my God, living wages. And they're like, yeah. And I'm still like, difference of opinions, that's fine. I think what we're talking about here is, is calling out what's bad. Like Worley, the guy who ran for mayor last time, all right? He went to the, he went to the library, and so, because he didn't want the drag queens reading to children, he's calling them groomers. Have you looked at the Pocatello sexual registry? Not many drag queens on there, if any. I haven't seen any, all right? BYU professor actually grooming kids, right? Two years probation. No, no. You have to call out that evil. That's what you have to do. It depends what you want in this damn city. Sorry.
Thank you. You don't have to apologize every time. Mr. Mangum?
I feel like I'm, I'm working on this right now in my current seat on the city council. When interviewed with the mayor, he had asked a similar question, and my thought was to become the glue. I want to become the glue, to draw people back together, to unify people, to encourage diversity and inclusion, to encourage people to unify and work together, serving on multiple boards through the community, serving at different community events, and being the representation for people who don't look like everybody else, who don't sound like everybody else, who don't carry themselves like everybody else. I want to be the glue for, for the people of Pocatello. I also pride myself on trying to be the cheerleader for Pocatello. Everywhere that I go, I cheerlead Pocatello. People call it an armpit, or they call it this dust ball. But Pocatello is a fantastic place. I mean, I'm from Arco, so I mean, you know, you know, go Poki.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Well, Arco is upwind from the nuclear site, so, you know, that was always a safer place. I'd rather be in the heart of it. Yeah, my, my, it's, if you don't realize what's happening for the community, it happens in lots of places, you know, there's a majority faction of our community. And, you know, a lot of the other smaller groups are people who are creative, knew how to survive as minority groups in here, or they wouldn't have stayed. Of course, a lot of them did leave, and especially when they deal with things. But, you know, there gets to be a point of stupidity, you know? We see shows, we see things about this, and yeah. Once you put the temple in the most radioactive city, that makes three temples in eastern Idaho, all in radioactive cities. To me, that's a legacy that's going to stay unless they learn how to be fair in housing, fair in employment, fair in schools, fair in the classroom at ISU, and not be biased towards being, have to be LDS just to get the position. The body system's got to stop in that respect or change.
Thank you. What is your stand on books with sexual graphics in them being available to children in the Marshall Public Library? Mr. Contreras?
Oh, my God. It should be outlawed, and anybody who puts those books in the library should be arrested. I do not condone that kind of literature in any library. I'm shocked, really, because as an educator, I've been in many libraries and in California. I didn't see any of that stuff in the libraries there. So, but now it's becoming more rampant. And I like to know who's authorizing this, because nobody seems to say who's authorizing these books being put in these libraries. Nobody's being held accountable. Everybody's pointing fingers. Nobody has the guts to stand up and say, I put those books in there. Well, we need to find out, because that's how you nip things in the bud. You can't wait till the books are already on the shelves to make a move. We have to make a move before that happens and find out who's doing it and hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I was at the library board meeting in August, and they actually compromised. The floors are now delineated between adult and young adult. There isn't porn for kids in the library. I don't believe in banning books, and I think that a public library should be for everybody. That's my position.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
Yeah, I was at the library today, actually. There's nothing wrong with sexually explicit books, because you're not going to have a six, seven-year-old going through there pulling it out. The librarian would say something, you know? Listen, right here, this phone, if your kid got one, they've seen porn, and they're probably looking at it, especially if you've got young males in your house. I promise you, this is more of a problem. And it's up to the parents to actually talk to your children about sex, all right? Yes, they're like, oh, and it's like people are afraid that a, a man wants to be in a dress. Who cares? It's clothes. Oh, my God, you need to get over it. There's nothing wrong with the books in the library, all right? Like I said, you're not going to have a six-year-old pulling out that book for a teenager.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
I want to answer that question directly, is what it is, how you asked it. Can you read that again?
I can. What is your stand on books with sexual graphics in them being available to children in the Marshall Public Library?
Okay. I am adamantly against children having these books, or children getting access to these books. I'm 100% in support of the books remaining but being separated so they're out of the reach of the children for parents to be able to parent. I'm not in favor of books being banned. We just saw recently in other parts of the country where the Book of Mormon, the Bible, and other historical and religious materials have been removed because of these same things. And now, all of this stuff is being reversed, because I find the Bible to be a very important book, you know, just me personally. And so I, it, it's scary to say that we would ban books, but I do, but I do stand firm on the fact that these materials should not be in the hands of children if they are damaging to the children.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
I think it's a stupid question, because libraries by definition have always mainly been that way. It all depends on how much funding they get, how much they have the ability to do that. But nobody's usually malicious to put things in there. They're more malicious to take things out, like the information on the radioactive materials in this community used to be in the public library, but not anymore, you know? Hardly anything is available to you. They censored all kinds of things here. City of secrets, that's what they do. But in general, you know, it's kids, of course, that's profane, you know, to, you know, parents, that's your job to embarrass your kids. That's all I can say about that. And you got two of them in most cases, male and female, so do a good job. Embarrass the heck out of them. Teach them something. Teach them what they should know, and listen to your values and your judgments.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. I have to say, I categorically oppose book banning. It's un-American. I'm for freedom. I'm for freedom of press. I'm for freedom of speech. I'm for freedom of expression. And importantly to this category, I'm for the freedom of parents to decide what is appropriate or not appropriate for their children. There isn't porn in the children's sections of the library. Is there some material in the adult section that might offend someone? Surely there is. But I don't believe it's the government's role or a small minority's role to tell people what they can and cannot read.
Thank you. Okay, next question. What plans do you have to cut city spending to allow for property tax relief? We'll start with you, Mr. Paulson.
That's a tough one. So I do agree that funding should be maximized for all of Pocatello. Wait, can you hear me okay with this? Is that, okay. Sorry, can you repeat the question? I had to make sure you could hear me.
What plans do you have to cut city spending to allow for property tax relief?
I would prefer if we could cut spending in ways that maximize efficiency rather than categorically having spending cuts. I know a lot of our departments, they need the current funding they have, and some places need more. However, I do agree that spending can be cut in ways that maximize efficiency.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
All right. Yeah, I don't want to cut people from any department. Those are jobs, and they're people who have lives, and I would like to keep them in Pocatello, all right? Yes, you can cut some spending. I was looking at the budget, and there was something about a luncheon. I'm like, what's a luncheon for? Like, bring your own damn lunch. What the hell's that all about? But it's, it's more than about cutting the taxes. It's about having a proper property tax. I'm so glad this, all right? Like I was saying earlier, there's a piece of property, two and a half acres, paying the same amount as, like, it was a third of an acre. And we need to really reconsider how we are doing our property taxes. I would like to bring in a consultant. I've actually been looking into a few. I think it's like 3H. And what they do is they'll go through all the property, and they'll show what's making money, where's the money, and how you, where money's being lost. And I would like to go through that and actually have a proper property tax, kind of like a progressive property tax. The bigger the house, the more you make, the more you got to pay.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
So the question was based upon cutting spending, and I wouldn't necessarily say that we overspend as a city. What I would say is that we need to widen our tax base, and we need to increase revenues. If we increase revenues and widen our tax base, we don't have so much. It doesn't feel like there's such a tax burden on the citizens. As a council this year, we did, we did decide not to increase taxes. And so we're doing what we can to make sure that we are mitigating that for our citizens and for our community. But if we do widen our tax base and we focus on economic development, drawing more revenue into our city, it'll feel like we're not spending as what it appears.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Well, mine's very simple. Get together with the tribes and seize Mount Uranium outside of Pocatello. It's worth billions and billions, billions of dollars. And, and seize it. Seize it until FMC cleans up the community and sell it to somebody else who will make something useful and more safe with it than just sticking it on the outside of our town and blew through chubbing in the winds for, since the 1940s. So that's what I suggest, and stop spending money, our taxpayers' money, on trying to hide things, because it's all about nuclear accountability. You just can't hide things because this stuff lasts for millions of years. You've got to deal with the study and remove it. It's not going to go away. You'll never lose the title, I'm the most radioactive city in the world, until you do something about it. So I give you some suggestions, and I got a lot more.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. So having been through one city budget process now, I can say our budget is pretty lean. There isn't a whole lot of fat to cut. So for people that say they want to cut taxes, they have a hard decision to make, and that's what essential services do you want to have, do you want to cut? And what I'm hearing from the citizens is they don't want their essential services cut. They want their central services, their essential services enhanced, and I support that. So I'm not all for these slice-and-burn type of austerity budgets. I think it's harmful for your community. Instead, what I think we need to do is support expanding our tax base by recruiting and retaining quality businesses to Pocatello, and that would be part of my economic development plan.
Mr. Contreras?
I would advocate for more frequent audits to find out where the pork is going. And I also would ask that there be more competitive and honest, open bidding for contractors, because what I'm hearing, there's a lot of pork going to these contractors, more money than they need. I had two contractors approach me, and they say their eyes light up when they have an opportunity to get some money from the city, because they get what they want plus more. And I would like to see what that more is. And that would be where I would begin, do more frequent audits and find out, and have more transparent bidding for contractors, and find out what the actual bid is versus what they actually get. So that's what I would start there.
Thank you. Next question is, how do you propose addressing police officer and first respondents' wages and the department's ability to retain experienced personnel? And we start with you, Mr. Bucci.
All right. This is, this is a loaded question, because it kind of relates to the tax thing, and we do need to bring in more taxes. And that's what I'm saying. You got to develop your downtown to bring in the taxes. Get more teachers to bring more families into this city, all right? But I would like to help the police and first responders by getting more affordable housing, because once the housing costs go up and you don't have a place to live, I call it the effort factor. And that's when people don't care. They will rob, they'll do the drugs, and it is, that's the major issue. If we can fix that, our police force doesn't have to, I mean, it's what, 15 million spent on it? That's a lot. And, you know, I don't mind paying the police, believe me. Shit, they need to make more money. It's ridiculous, the crap they go through. I mean, with all the crackheads, meth heads, oh, my God. It's, it's getting bad. And it's because if we can lower the housing costs, that would really help a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Mangum?
To address the pay of, of our civil servants, I think it's very, it's really important to, to make sure that they're well-compensated for what they do. During my time here on the council, we, we moved to give them a bonus pay for the work that they did during the COVID shutdowns. And so I'm always in favor of working with them on pay. I think that a comparative rate study would need to be done, comparing their wages versus other wages that are comparable to our size, our stature, and what we offer here within the city. I think that also open negotiations would need to take place, working with those police and fire unions and, and all these services, to make sure that we're doing a just service to them, but not only to them, but to you as taxpayers, and to make sure that we're doing something adequate and not just flying off the seat of our pants and just throwing money willy-nilly. But they do need to be paid and compensated fairly for the work that they do.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Well, I totally support the police force here. Most have never ever met me, know so. I'd like to work with them. I actually want to do the riot in the ground, so I hope they're listening over there, that I can get one soon. And so, but otherwise, it can be abused, and of course, they know when they shouldn't do it, because one time Brian tried to have me, literally picked, pushed the panic button, and had the SWAT team come in, and would have shot me if I didn't do the right thing, just because I was exercising my free speech. Well, they took away the button, the panic button for Brian, but it was the police officers who just go, what the heck is going on, you know? Because they knew me, and they knew I couldn't, wouldn't have done anything. But hey, they're, they're great guys for the most part. With what little they have, I fully support and always have given them decent wages, for sure. It's a tough job, and I thank you for it.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Sure. You know, I think having a safe community is just essential and should be one of our top priorities. And of course, that in large part is done through policing. So I fully support having good pay and benefits to not only the police, but to the fire department and all of our city employees. That's critically important. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of doing that while trying to keep, you know, our budget at a, at a reasonable level. We've also, relative to the police department, we've provided, you know, lots of different equipment, all kind of training, and we need to continue to do that and maybe even enhance that. The recruitment and retention, it's really, it's not only a Pocatello problem, it's a nationwide problem. People are just not wanting to come into law enforcement.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras?
I believe that the police and first responders should be the highest-paid civil servants in the city. They have the hardest job of anybody here in the city. Without law and order, what do we have? We need the law and order. We need to retain the good police officers, the good servants who are emergency people who come and save us, protect us. I mean, what, this is, this is the, this is the number-one duty of our government, is to protect its citizens. And if we can't provide good pay to those who protect us, then what's the point? So I think, again, they should be the highest-paid civil servants in town. And I'll close with that.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I've been explicit. I've written a letter to the Pocatello Police Union. They need better pay and better benefits. It's expensive to train police, and it's expensive to retain them. If they have the incentive to want to stay here, then they will. I strongly believe that they need to be properly funded and have the proper I strongly believe that they need to be properly funded and have the proper facilities and support.
Thank you. Okay, next question is, what is your stance on city employees forming a union and how do you plan to address their concerns? And we start with Mr. Mangan.
I think that unions are, are important. Unions are, they, they draw strength. It's people uniting together on a common need, on a common basis and able to approach certain things. If their, if their voices or opinions aren't being heard, them coming together as a mass group really can help to drive that effort. I also feel like there might not necessarily be a need for that because we do, we try to do our best to maintain great working conditions and a great pay and benefits for our city employees. And so I would support the city employees on being compensated fairly in whichever way that they need to be supported.
Thank you. Mr. Law, your stance on city employees forming a union?
Well, I'm always supportive of unions because that's what the whole point of everybody's supposed to be here, coming together as a union, you know? Thinking, working together for a better world, a better life. So yes, a union, of course. And the Pocatello and any of those are allowed unions or ten in this state because we're a right-to-not-work state, then, you know, we got to change things again. But let's change them. The only thing I have about the police and, you know, I'd like to citizens' arrests, my First Amendment rights more, you know, I might ask them more to rest a few of yous here or others that are, you know, over there. So basically, yes, I am for them, as I said.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Sure, I, I support unions. It's just people coming together to collectively bargain for their, for their interest. I support that. Presently, we have a very active police and fire unions. We collectively bargain with those and that's a good thing. I think we're actually worked well for everyone. You know, if the rest of the city employees wanted to form a union, I'm okay with that, I guess. So yeah, if that's what they want to do, then good for them. I support it.
Mr. Contreras?
I'm not really, I'm, I'm a union man. I, I support unions, but I really don't have the knowledge to make a, any kind of statement right now in unions. If city council and the mayor thinks that unions might be a good idea for city employees, then I might go along with it after a complete study. But right now, I really, I'm sorry, but I really don't have an answer for that question right now.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I'm a strong union supporter. Unions were the people who got us a five-day work week, eight hours a day, no children in minds. I 100% support the unions and I think it's a worker's choice. If the workers choose to do that, then that is their decision and I don't think the cities should try to stop that.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci?
Hell, yeah, I'm for unions, all right? It's just the democratization of the workplace and I think we need more unions. It's sad that this is a right-to-work state. They make it sound all fancy, but no, it's just so they can fight your ass if they don't like you. It's bullshit. It really is. It's a sad situation. I would love to unionize every workplace. We should, you know? Wobblies, workers of the world unite. Have we learned this in history? Hay Marcus Gwia, Chicago? I mean, yeah, no, I'm all about the unions.
Thank you. Okay, we have two questions left and I'd like to get to both of them. I will start with Mr. Law on this one. What is your position on city-owned recreation facilities such as public golf courses specifically replacing outdated clubhouses?
Placing what outdated?
Outdated clubhouses?
Clubhouses?
Yes, sir.
There is clubhouses other than the golf course?
Well, that was the, the question, the public golf course.
Public golf course, well, I had a friend who used to drive around and somebody says, oh, where's the ghetto? She used to be a realtor, real estate person, very honest one. And she'd say, you know, where's the ghetto? And she'd drive around and then stop at the golf course and say, here we are. That was her opinion of, you know, our elitist golfing crowd, but hey, what can I say? I used to teach golf at some Squaw Valley. So yes, I know how to play golf. I'd not say I liked the company a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Sure. You know, I fully support city-owned recreational facilities, not only for the golf course, but all throughout our community. You know, I fully support our park system. And, and I'm not the only one. I'd like to talk a little bit about economic development here. You know, I've had some experience in economic development and having a well-maintained community with a lot of public amenities and a lot of recreational opportunities is not only healthy for the citizens, it's also healthy for bringing quality business into, into Pocatello. And that's becoming more and more important as time goes on where you have companies that can move to any variety of different communities and they want to have their employees in an area where they have a lot of recreational activities. So as far as recreational activity goes, I'm all for it and the more, the better.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras?
I prepared for it. I went to my 55th high school reunion. It was a three-day event and the first day was a golf tournament. So I made my mind up that I was going to practice so I can go and beat my fellow student or fellow students in this game. So I probably played about 20 times Riverside and Highland. And the golf courses are beautiful. The clubhouses, they do need some work. They're, they're small, but it gets kind of crowded there where you can't go inside and enjoy a refreshment because there's no room inside. So I'd be all in favor if we were able to find some extra money to assist these golf courses and to enhance their clubhouses because they make a lot of revenue and a lot of people from out of town go to these golf courses. I meant, most of the people I meet aren't even from Pocatello who play. They're from everywhere else, seems like. But I would be in favor of enhancing the golf courses, the clubhouses if, if we could find the money for that.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
If the facilities aren't properly maintained and they're running down, I think they should be fixed. But whoever asked the question, I would like to hope that you're open to also making more youth community center activities available because I don't see young children really playing golf too much. I would like to hope that all of our facilities, the community center, et cetera, also has that funding.
Thank you. Mr. Bucci? What's your position on city-owned recreation facilities specifically replacing outdated clubhouses and golf courses and things like that?
All right, city-owned recreation, I'm good with that. I would even go a step further. Do you know the New York City Police Union actually invested into an apartment complex and it's making a lot of money for them? But specifically on golf courses, get rid of it. It's, let's be real, that's a waste of land. It's part of what I was talking about, about land value. It is to play the stupid game. No, you, like he wants a youth center and stuff? Yeah, tear down those golf courses, put up a youth center, a corner store, some housing. What? Like another downtown, that is, golf courses are such a waste of land. The water, no, it's a waste of water, everything. I'm sorry, I'm against it. It's a rich man's game and I'm the working class. I'm sorry. Highly racist, too. It is.
Thank you. Okay, we are running short on time, but we do have one question from a young citizen in our audience. They would like to know from each of you, what do you like to eat? Mr. Nichols?
Anything that's delicious.
There's your constituent, right there.
But, you know, I, I enjoy interesting and diverse things, so, you know, I like to travel and I like to always try to hit up the local street food and find out, you know, get a flavor for the, what the local cuisine is like. And then I like to come back and see if I can sort of recreate that in a kitchen and most of the times I fail at it, but, but I have a pretty, I like diverse types of foods from all over the world, along with American foods, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras, what do you like to eat?
I love watermelon. I love McDonald's double cheeseburgers, which I had before I came here today. I love tomatoes. So, I mean, I could probably, I could probably live on those things all day long because I have a tomato garden that's still producing tomatoes. So I'm able to go out there and grab 10 or 12 tomatoes, add a little salt to them and I'm in heaven. So I, I'm kind of a fast food guy. I had Mexican food yesterday, so I'm all over the place, but, you know, my favorite food, my favorite food food would be fried chicken. So whenever I get my hands on some good fried chicken, which I'm still looking for, that's what I would devour with no problem.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
Mexican Coke and tortilla chips with Tabasco.
Thank you. That's that. Mr. Bucci?
I love this question. I love food. Like, this is my thing, all right? Like, if, if I ever invite you over tacos, come, all right? I lo, oh, my God, I love tacos. Now, if you like raviolis, you like raviolis back there? No? Oh, damn.
What'd she say?
That's a fault on your parents. All right, listen. With the raviolis, this is what you do. You get yourself some French bread, you cut that in half, you dig it out, you pour the raviolis in, all right? Then you throw a little Parmesan, put a little Italian sausage in and then a little Parmesan and a little more raviolis, little more Parmesan, you got yourself, oh, oh, my God, it's so, it's still a-
That ravioli lasagna.
Yeah, oh, and it's, it's in your hand and if you want, you could eat it with a fork. Oh, it is so delightful.
Thank you. Mr. Mangan, what's for dinner?
So I'm going to answer that question, but I'm going to go back to that first, that last one real quick. I support the golf course and the recreation facilities. We partnered with Health Trust, with Port of Health Trust to upgrade our rec center. And so I am 100% in support of all of our recreational amenities. I'm also on the golf committee for the city of Pocatello. So I'm all in favor for the golf. Food-wise, my parents own Grandpa Southern Barbecue in Idaho Falls. We have fried chicken, Mr. Contreras, every Friday, we have fried chicken and fried catfish. Fried catfish, anything southern is where you got my heart, anything southern. So catfish, crawfish, barbecued anything. When I say anything, I mean anything. Alligator, fried alligator is really delicious, too. Fried alligator. Got to do that.
Mr. Law?
Well, I would say we got all that here in Pocatello. We do have a species of catfish and we got, but don't, we don't have any alligators, but we had a place people thought there were alligators, but they were really beaver. They just, when they got splashed, they screamed, "Alligator!" But that wasn't the case, so. But otherwise, I'm a connoisseur of food. I've traveled all over the world and I like people. I meet everywhere. It's all about, usually about eating with them. But I have a little addendum to add to the recreation. The uranium was not put on the golf course because in that part of town, they also developed a little area that got burnt down once.
Excuse me, we're answering the young constituents' question about what do you like to eat?
I just, I'm concerned of all food. I cook myself.
Thank you.
I make all kinds of things internationally.
Thank you.
There's a whole breadth of things to like out there. Everything is different as much as people, maybe more so. But in terms of the local sports areas, there's still nuclear contamination in a number of those, but I don't like people taking it and hiding it. So we just need to get it removed. Be safe.
Thank you. We are out of time. Many thanks to our candidates and our audience for attending this evening. The forum was recorded and it will be available for viewing in the next few days on the League of Women Voters website and on YouTube. We want to remind you that your voice matters. Be sure to contact your representatives here on the city council with your comments and